I'd like to call the meeting to order for the town of McCandless for June 28, 2021. If we have four council members up here, but just to let you know, we have three council members that are joining us by Zoom, so we do have a full complement, just so you don't wonder where everyone is. They're here. All right. We'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Swager.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
If you stand to this side, Mike will pick you up.
So there's a lot of work to be on council and some things are a lot more fun than other things. This was one of the favorite things that we have instituted since I've been on council. So it's always a pleasure to me to be able to present these wards. So could I please have Jim Northrup come forward? And you will stand right here, I think, facing me. We're still getting used to our cameras. This is just our second meeting in public, so thank you. All right. Jim, Jim went to work using the bus. And when he realized that they were closing down the bus stop that he was used to attending, he needed to come to Blazer Drive to catch the bus. So to avoid walking on some dangerous roads, he decided that he would look for an alternative method. Isn't that how things are always? Mother of necessities, the mother of invention. He noticed a small path through a grove of trees that ran parallel to Pine Creek Road that led to Blazer Park and Ride. Jim began, so Jim decides this is the way that he's going to go to the park. Right? He's not going to, he's not going to drive like everybody else. He's walking through the woods on a path. So Jim began to clear debris, trim the underbrush and the overhanging branches to create a more negotiable path. After consulting with Marion Crossman of the Racial Carson Conservancy Trail Organization, Jim learned that the area he was clearing had a name. It was called Vestal Trail. Ms. Crossman provided advice throughout the years on trail construction and maintenance and connected Jim with other trail advocates. McCandless Township was consulted in all aspects to this, this trail construction. No going rogue. The development of the Vestal Trail became a labor of love for Jim. He spent weekends widening the trail, adding field to the swampy areas, planting trees and wildflowers, and building a bridge over the creek. Along the way, neighbors began assisting Jim with the more difficult task. As more neighbors became aware of Vestal Trail, they began to use the trail for walks to Blazer Drive, to Vestal Field, mountain biking, bird watching, and snow shoeing. Everyone agrees with Jim Northrup, did I say it? Nor- Northrup, thank you, has made our corner of the world and his corner of the world a little more beautiful place to live. So I am very proud to recognize you with the Citizens Award of Recognition for the Town of McCandless that says, "And recognition of your multi-decade effort to develop, expand, and maintain the Vestal Park Trail, creating a space of nature and solace for local residents." Thank you so much. Did you want to say anything, sir?
Oh, thank you very much for this. This is wonderful. And I want to thank my neighbors who are helping me out. A couple of them are here. And people who come, they really enjoy it. And I'm glad that they do.
We're glad that you do that. That you care about your community and you help. Thank you so much, sir.
About this?
How about in public, public comment comes up in, right now, actually? Now's the time for public comment. If you are joining us by video, please put your name and your address in the chat box so we can recognize you in the order that you put it in there. And so we already have someone in that's present who would like to speak. Please come up to the microphone and say your name and your address.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jeff Chazork. I live at 10090 Oak Ridge Drive. I'm a neighbor of Jim and Jack. And I just want everyone here to know that the trail has been represented by McCandless. I'm a wonderful. Very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? It is about anything. This is, this is the, this is public comment on anything? Items tonight or just general comment?
This is general comment. I think it's in the future. My name is Joseph Markle, 9499 Catherine Drive. Comes to my attention that they're proposing an ordinance to approve chickens in McCandless Township. That'll do wonders for our home values. A neighbor next door has 21 chickens, the nois, the dirt, and what's with the chickens? Is this a farming community? I've been here 30 years. Never heard such a thing. And if you got chickens, another guy runs goats. Next thing, before you know it, we got donkeys in somebody's backyard. So I'm just wondering, where does this proposal come from? And, you know, and how many chickens it is? Just a back and forth answer? Or is this just talk and that's it?
This is a time for public comments. You can give your opinion. But, sir, we would not have gone to the trouble to write this ordinance if we had not had citizens who wanted it. I promise you.
Okay, it might be citizens that want it. But is that 130,000? What's the percentage of citizens that want it? Oh, that's be, that'd be an interesting thing to find out. Because the truth of the matter is, is it in Edsmore, Swickley, Upper St. Clair, Mont Levenin? I mean, we're talking about our home values here. And I wouldn't want to have a neighbor next to me that has chickens running around. Anyways, that's my comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jack Casey. I live at 10030 Tumbler Court in Wexford. And I'm here again to talk about that 26 inches of highway that we get to maneuver on to try to get between Oak Ridge, actually Longview, and over by the Lincoln dealership and the Firestone Tire Place. We have 26 inches. That's almost a little bit wider than my shoulders. I see people walk it all the time. Someone's going to get run over. The high school's there. The kids come out doing their texts. They fly down that road, 60, 70 mile an hour. You can ask the chief of police what speeds they go on that road. It's certainly not 40 mile an hour. And the volume is ridiculous. If you go one road further down to Longview, it's eight foot wide all the way down that hill. Why do we have to have 26 inches? I saw Mr. Grimm's note saying, hey, we should maybe table spending the money, find the money, another use for the $400,000 the state gave you to put sidewalks in. We don't necessarily need sidewalks, but we need that hillside carved back to be eight foot, just like the rest of the road, all the way down McKnight, all the way down Pine Creek Hill. Also, I thought RJ was charged with going back to talk about, you know, finding additional funds to do it with a sidewalk the whole way. And I never saw on any of your council notes anywhere where she's reported back as to what the status of that is. But we would certainly appreciate if you could peel that hill, hill back to make it eight foot to be in, actually unison with, with what's going down the hill. And I don't think we need to be waiting until somebody buys the property and then determines how they're going to develop it. You know, it's, it's real simple. It's a New Jersey barrier. You pull back the hillside, put in New Jersey barrier. If they want to develop further, fine. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we, the next item on the agenda is the town council meeting minutes from June the 14th. Were there any changes or additions for anyone?
In this section, for our motion to adopt resolution number 10 of 2021 regarding state of disaster emergency, Councilwoman, President Zachary made the motion and Councilmember Smith made the second for that.
Were there any other changes or additions? Right, hearing none. I'm opening up for a motion to adopt minutes. Okay. Councilmember Woods made motion to adopt amended, minutes amended. Is there a second? So we have a little delay on our screen here. So I'm going to do the best that I can to try to make sure that everybody gets fair play. We're working through this as we go. So if you think council members that are joining us, if you think you're going to move to initial or second emotion, maybe put up your hand just a second early because you just have like a little second delay. And I want you to be able to make those motions and second those motions. So maybe just be ready. So when I call, you know, maybe your hand is up. But I think Councilmember Tarrell was there first for that. Again, I'll call for any changes that need to be made. All right, there's been a motion, a second, all those in favor of adopting the council's minutes as amended indicate by saying aye. Thank you for raising your hand at home. Of those opposed, all right, motion carries. All right, Lee, it's on report. Activity Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. The Activities Advisory Committee report and minutes is in your packet. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And if I could, please take a moment and just remind everybody of a couple of events coming up. First is the Stars and Stripes Bingo this coming Thursday, and also to mark your calendars for our Community Day events this September 11th. It will not be the usual Community Day that we've had in the past, but we are going to still gather as a community and with a special pointer.
Got some of my respondables?
Can you hear me?
Ike, we can now, yes.
Just so you know, I, it's very odd. My screen of council has frozen several times like just now, but yet I can see movement from my fellow Zooming council members. So for the IT specialists, I don't know what that means, but maybe you can address it.
Andy's nodding his head, so we must understand.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President. The minutes of the Environmental Advisory Committee are in council's packets. I would be happy to answer any questions anyone may have. Hearing none, that concludes my report.
Financial Development, Emotional Committee for the Heritage Center.
The minutes for the Heritage Center are in your packet. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any. And just to, just to add on to Councilmember Spahnholz, I'm, we're, I'm having the same issue that she is as well, where the video will freeze and I'll, I'll lose audio. But I can still see movement from the other, from the other Zoom participants, so.
Did you want to mention any upcoming events?
Well, oh, excuse me, sorry. There is the event coming up on August 3, the National Night Out, and the Heritage Center will be open for that. And there's also a history of baseball event on August 12. And for Community Day, the Heritage Center will be open until 7 o'clock.
Thank you. Anything else?
Nope, any questions?
All right. Junior Councilmember? Rush? Okay, he is not on. I will make a little announcement for him. He's moving forward with the Red Cross to do a blood drive. We couldn't find a suitable place that could take all their machines and have the access that they needed here. So it is going to be at the Wexford Fire Company on 7/29, but we will be supporting that. Okay. McCandless Franklin Park Ambulance Authority.
Thank you, Madam President. Quite a bit of information is in council's packet, the last meeting's agenda, minutes, and a variety of financials. So if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them. Any questions, anyone? Hearing none, that concludes my report.
I do not believe the MIDA had a meeting this month, so we move to the sanitary authority.
The meeting minutes for the last meeting are in your packets. And if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them. Okay, nothing else for me.
North Hills Council of Governments, I believe, had no meetings. The library.
Again, you, I think there's, the agenda and meeting minutes are all in your packet, including the upcoming agenda, I believe. Or maybe it was the meeting that just ended. But that's all in your packets. And if you have any questions, let me know.
I'd like to remind the public that all this that we're talking about in our packets is also posted on the website under the agenda. So when you go on the left-hand corner, it says agendas. You hit council meetings, then you can find all this information. So it's not secret. It's all available to the public if you, just for your information. So you know. Personnel Board?
The meeting minutes are in your packets. Please let me know if you have any questions. That completes my report.
North Pittsburgh Regional Chamber of Commerce.
Our last meeting, we talked about having the chamber members pull together a welcome packet for new residents in the campus. They have them together. I just don't know who would put them off to.
Probably, we have someone on our AAC working on a new welcome packet format. So that would be perfect.
Okay, I'll get their name after the meeting and we'll get.
We appreciate their involvement. Thank you.
That's all? All right, terrific. Planning Commission? The minutes are in your information. And we have a couple of things coming forward this week. You'll hear more about those under new and old business. Technology Committee.
So the minutes for the most recent meeting are in the very large PDF file, but I don't see them on SharePoint separately. So in case you missed it, I'll just let you know quickly that we're still working with NA for the PEG channel, looking for RFPs to work on getting the new software that we're purchasing, and looking at some possible, not upgrades, but just kind of reconfiguration of the website to make it a little easier to navigate.
Any questions? Volunteer Firefighter Steering Committee.
The meeting minutes are in your packets. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Zoning Hearing Board?
And the meeting minutes are in your packet. And I do want to let our residents know who went through some hearings last month. We appreciate their patience. We had some technical difficulties and we needed to reconvene, which seems like it was, could have been unnecessary. But because of the process, we want to make sure everything is done legitimately with a full hearing so that that eliminates any problems in the future. So we really appreciate our residents for their patience.
We have three ad hoc committees. There are subcommittees of council. The first one is stormwater management.
Thank you, Madam President. Council, you will have found a variety of information in your packets this week. After considering the information contained and the time needed to do a more formal presentation, we thought it was a good idea to give you the opportunity well in advance of actually having the formal presentation to thoroughly review this information. So with the expectation that we will have gateway engineers provide a formal report to council at one of the July meetings. And I'm asking, Mr. Grimm, would you like to just give a brief update on kind of the state of affairs in terms of all the work of the subcommittee, as well as what the town is doing, as well as our engineers and in coordination with other communities?
Not only are we working on this update of the stormwater ordinance, and Miss Spahnholz mentioned, we're working with communities in the Westward Run Watershed and the Army Corps of Engineers to look at flooding situations along that tributary of Pine Creek Watershed. Also working with communities in the Pine Creek Watershed through the council of governments on coordinating projects that are identified in the watershed implementation plan, the county hazard mitigation plans. So we will be working throughout the course of the next several months and even beyond to not only identify projects that are occurring in the Pine Creek Watershed, but we will be working at joint applications for improvements in the area and just supporting one another's projects and funding approaches that we're trying to take.
Thank you. That's all we have for tonight. If there's any questions.
We look forward to seeing that presentation. It is a lot of information. I appreciate you give us a little extra time to digest it all. A lot of terminology. Thank you.
Grant Rider? I have been in contact with Carnegie Library, their Grant Writing Center, and was given a list of professionals in the area to contact. So that is what I'm doing right now, reaching out. And hopefully I'll be able to create a format like the one Tricia's presented us with, while we compare our banks and other services to see what might work best. We're wondering if it makes sense to contract someone by the proposal, by the grant or annually. So those kind of considerations are going to take place, looking at the cost benefit. And hopefully we'll have a report for that very soon.
Excellent. Thank you. Police Community Engagement.
So coming up, we have the National Night Out, which we already heard about earlier. It's on August 3. Coming up in September, we have the Police Academy that's going to be starting. And then pretty soon after that, Ryan's going to hopefully be able to start doing a coffee with our Chief of Police down at Town Hall. So he can meet any citizens who'd want to come have coffee with them. That's pretty much it right now.
All right, thank you. I have no reports or correspondence as of this time. Town Manager's Report?
Thank you, Madam President. You've all received a copy of my report. The only other thing that I want to identify or highlight is that the town, well, Police Department, our intern, and other members and staff are working on a grant for body board cameras, federal grant, so that would pay for 50% of the costs associated with those body board cameras. So we're hopeful that we can be successful with that. And we'll keep you informed as we know more.
Any question about the Town Manager's Report? Lot of information in there. Lot going on. We keep our Town Manager busy. Just asking. Town Chair's Report?
Thank you. My report was part of the packet. One thing that came up since I submitted my report, I wanted to let council know is that on Friday, both the State House and Senate passed an amendment to the Sunshine Act, which is currently on the governor's desk, and is to be signed with respect to the posting of agendas publicly at least 24 hours before your meetings, which we already do. But there are some other intricacies in the proposed bill that I will coordinate with Bob and let you all know as well in my next report as to what changes, if any, that the town may want to consider. It doesn't appear off the cuff that there are any significant changes that you already meet these requirements. But just to make sure, I'll work with Bob and make sure that that's the case.
Is the newspaper announcement going to be part of this?
It is mine.
Excellent.
That's a separate piece of legislation.
That's correct. The newspapers are still in business.
Okay, all right.
Legal ads, apparently.
We spend, that's a lot of money we spend on newspaper advertising. Anything else?
That's all. It's the end of my report.
All right, we're moving down to old business. Everyone has the checklist of bills. Are there any questions about this at all? The checklist, Tricia's here. Okay. Then I open the floor for motions to approve the checklist. Okay. Councilmember, oh, were you making a nomination? You have a question? Excellent. Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve checklist number five dated May 1, 2021 to May 31, 2021 totaling $1,028,819.33 submitted each member of council, posted on the bulletin in town.
Second. Councilmember Smith? Again, I call for any questions. Tricia's present. If you have anything you'd like to ask her. Hearing none. All those in favor approving checklist number five indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, do we? All right, do we have a representative from Waste Management present?
I can answer any questions that you may have regarding the information that was set out.
All right.
Wanted to make a comment that I do appreciate the research given on the question of a 6:00 AM versus 7:00 AM start and conferring with the school district and things like that. Definitely helps with our decisions.
Any other comments or questions?
Yes.
I received some questions from constituents about what we recycle and why we don't recycle certain things. So can you just go through that real quick?
In the, in the contract, as we would be getting it started, we will be recycling cardboard, paper, aluminum cans, bi-metal cans, steel cans. Number one, number two, plastics. Currently, our plan would be to put together a separate drop-off area for glass so that will be done outside the contract with whatever hauler that we have. The, the reason for the changes in the contract and recyclables is several for. One is market of products, whether there is or there is not a market of products. Number two, and that's sometimes it's a matter of economics, whether there is or there is not a market. Second, reason for some of these changes is that the source separation or the separation that occurs sometimes is more difficult with the number three through seven plastics because of contamination. The same thing occurs in heart because of glass, but not so much. So there's a number of different factors that go into why the companies are now proposing the materials that they propose. As markets change, the contract calls for our ability to make changes in the items that are being recycled. Yeah, currently, in some cases like glass, there's a market if it's separated. There isn't the market if it's combined.
And all bidders picked up the same plastic, like they're all apples, that's one did. Okay.
So I heard something that I don't think I've heard before and that that was that Waste Management is putting a separate container here for people to pick up? Is that what you said?
Either working with Waste Management or we can work with Pennsylvania Resources Council or somebody else to do that. It's not part of the contract that gives us the ability to, to talk with them about that.
And that will come before council for discussion.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I mean, you know, I have the impression from the public council that if we can figure out an economic way to do that, we would like to continue that process. We just have to do it in a new way.
Yes. Are there any other questions? Public comment was, I'm sorry. So I still had this question about this information that was on the invoice.
And we, we will work with them. This, for, for everyone's information, this has to do with whether or not people are credited for times that they were not picked up. If somebody's leaving the town, moving away. The language that is in this on the bill now is general language that Waste Management uses for all customers. Our contract calls for an adjustment to be made when Waste Management receives information about a new owner. The old owner will receive credit for their, for services not performed. So if they're one month into the new quarter that they paid for, they would receive a refund of the two, two months for our contract to get that adjusted.
And it also has charges for ending service on here too.
And that.
Yeah, it's not true. It's on your bill.
It's on the bill.
We just want to get it off.
But we, yeah, we want to get it off and we've negotiated this out. The contract.
Question. Are they using CNG fuel trucks to cut down on emissions?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
I would still ask that council consider having the start times like some of the other communities have to be 7:00 o'clock since the buses are running all during those times anyway. I don't see the consequence of starting them an hour early on main roads or side roads. I think it's a nice consideration for the lucky individuals who get to sleep a little bit late and who have asked that I bring that up in this contract. So I would appreciate you all considering that, like some of the other towns, and have a 7:00 o'clock start instead of a 6:00 AM start. Any other comments? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Sawyer. Thank you. Thank you.
No, it's okay. I just wanted to say I've had the same thing where other residents have said they would prefer 7:00 o'clock start. So just wanted to agree with, agree with you on that.
Thank you. Any other councilmembers at home? I'm sorry, wasn't looking up at the screen. Yes.
I was just going to say that it looks like from the list, it's, it's a pretty limited number of roads with that 6:00 AM start. And they all are pretty major roads to me. So I personally, I don't have a problem with that list. And in any case, I appreciate that they, that they put that together for us.
And my complaints come from Grubbs Road, which is on that early start list. So I'm just putting that out there for my residents. Any other questions about this? So if there aren't any questions, is council ready to vote on this contract? I'm looking for head nods. Are we ready? Are there, do we have any more? Okay, it looks like we are ready for that. So there is not a motion here. So I guess it could be to accept the garbage contract as proposed or accept the contract with any, and then you state whatever your change that you wanted, change that you wanted in there. So I'm opening the floor for motions to accept the garbage contract. Councilmember Sawyer.
I'd like to make a motion to accept it with the, if we could change it to a 7:00 AM start for all streets.
Is there a second? Okay, calling again for a second for accepting the contract as is with a 7:00 o'clock start instead of a 6:00 o'clock start. Okay, there is no second, so the motion dies. Is there another motion? Councilmember Smith.
I would move to accept the contract as is.
That's Councilmember Smith. Is there a second?
Clarification. So the as-is means the main roads.
The main roads were six.
Would be six and everyone else would be seven.
Is that everyone's understanding? We want to make sure we know what we're voting on.
And I guess to be clear, I can rephrase that if I need to, or I'll let Mr. Corbald tell me if I should rephrase.
No, I think it's clear. I mean, the only thing I would suggest perhaps add is referencing Waste Management as the contract awarty.
Okay. So I would move to award the garbage contract to Waste Management as is, meaning 6:00 AM start time on main roads and 7:00 AM everywhere else. On the specific main roads they listed in their correspondence and 7:00 AM everywhere else.
Okay, so I have a motion. Is there a second? Okay, okay. Councilmember Charles made the second. Again, any other comments on this, the big contracts?
I just, for public information, base bid on the contract, this would be for all of the years, the five years of the contract, is $14,528,246.
For the second place.
Second place was $19 million. So we're substantially higher substantially.
Okay, any other questions? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of awarding the contract to Waste Management as is, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Go cover.
Word two?
Aye.
Word three? Word four?
Aye.
Word five?
Aye.
Word six?
Nay.
Word seven?
Aye.
Word one?
Nay. Okay, the motion carries five to two. All right, next we have a discussion, a rediscussion, additional discussion of coal tar, a possible coal tar resolution. Councilmember Spahn-Holz, do you want to take that?
Yes, thank you. And I promise fellow council members, I will not take up too much of your time. After listening to the comments and concerns raised at the last meeting on this issue, I felt compelled to do even more research and seek councils' reconsideration. First, I wanted to say that I appreciate and even agree with the fact that this type of issue in a perfect world should be regulated by federal state governments. However, they have not yet acted. So it leaves it to county, city, and local governments to bring attention to the dangers of PAH-containing coal tar sealant products. I'd also like to clarify that council, council tasked the EAC with researching this topic. And they did, their research was not one-sided. It took into consideration, was there a pro, was there a con? And their recommendation was based on diligent research on coal tar and PAHs as a whole. Second, through the additional research, we have found no good case for this product to be used, especially since there are so many reasonably priced alternatives. Even the Pennsylvania Asphalt Pavers Association and Strong Industry Advocacy Group supports a complete ban on this product. The United States Department of Interior has identified coal tar sealants as an environmental justice issue. And the EPA has completed multiple studies linking PAHs to increased risks of cancer, especially in children under the age of six. I believe it is in the best interest of our community to join with our sister communities and at least adopting a resolution. And I repeat, a resolution as described to us by our town attorney at the last meeting, which is simply a recommendation that our residents and businesses refrain from using this product with the sole goal of supporting the health and safety of our citizens and our many watersway and our many waterways. It is one small grassroots effort in support of our mission to make McCandless a safe place to live. And as a resolution, it is only advisory, but if it gives one property owner reason to further investigate and make a different decision on what product to use, I think it is worth it. And so I learned that there had been, which I don't think council was aware of, I was actually not myself, that the, our local town managers, Mr. Grimm included, have been speaking about this topic as well. So I didn't know. Mr. Grimm, did you have anything you wanted to add just in terms of the insights you've gained from conversations with our sister communities?
Certainly. The, the managers in the North Hills COG community have talked about this topic. And we've sort of talked it back and forth between ordinance and resolution. The general consensus among the managers in the North Hills communities has been to advise residents not to use it, use a resolution format to advise people not to use it as opposed to regulating. Now, there have been a couple that have chosen to regulate it, but the majority of the managers in the COG and my colleagues have gone the route of the resolution just as an advisory matter.
Thank you, Mr. Grimm. And I again remind council that the town, our town itself previously made the decision not to use this product at all now or moving forward as well. So certainly, the issue is open for additional comments and questions, but I would like to make a motion to adopt a resolution this evening. But any questions, comments?
There is a motion been made to.
Would you like me to make the motion at this point, Madam President?
I'm sorry, I thought you said you were making the motion. You would like to make.
I said I would like to make a motion. I didn't know if you wanted to. I should suggest comments now or make the motion and we'll take comments after the motion.
We always take comments after the second again, so if, however you want to do it.
All right. In that event, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 11, a resolution of the Town of McCandless Allegheny County Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, recommending as environmental best management practice that the use and application of certain polysyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, PAHs, and other agencies be avoided for the purposes of sealing driveways, parking lots, and other paved areas located within the Town of McCandless.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments by council? Councilmember Charles.
Like last time, I can't support this because I think we have state agencies that are better equipped to do it. I know it's not sort of, it's a resolution. So that's one, we don't have a panel of scientists like they will. And two, I don't think we should be in the business of even making resolutions for things like this. What about VOCs? What about lighting levels? Like where does it stop? And then we have a patchwork of advisory or ordinances that business has to, has to sort of juggle as they go into different jurisdictions.
I also researched this and I was wondering if you found in your research, how much coal tar is actually being used in McCandless?
I think that is the problem. I, I suspect that there's a very small, if small amount being used in residential applications since almost all hardware stores no longer, every big box and even smaller box, no longer sell it. But what the concern is, is actually for the larger massive parking lot projects that contractors may, you know, bring in these products from national manufacturers to use. We really don't know.
Are we aware of any? Do we know of a business in McCandless that has done this or any resident?
Madam President, I don't think that we would have any way of knowing.
All right, so my point is we don't know if this is being used at all. It's not being sold in the town. It's a resolution that is not enforceable. It feels like a little bit of overreach to me. I think an education process, as I suggested before, to explain this to businesses and to make an informal recommendation, explaining the hazards of it. Explaining the hazards of it along with other things in our town. Would be a better way of doing this as opposed to spending additional time and money on a resolution. That I think a lot of people will be like, what are they going to legislate next? So it feels a little invasive to me. Any other comments from anyone else? Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, I mean, I, I have the same concerns as last meeting, and, and I think. Yourself and Councilmember Charles have set those forth. I think I'd also just add that. You know, the, the. I, I think that, that we were, that there's kind of an assumption that. De- because DEP hasn't moved on this, it's a problem in DEP. I come from the other side of the equation on that and say. DEP would move on it if they thought they needed to move on it. And same thing with the EPA, like Councilmember Charles says, you know, those are people whose, that is their career. And they are not shy about going after what they, what they find to be contaminants. And so I, I wouldn't take the lack of regulation at the level of DEP or the EPA. To be something that should motivate us to, to do something like this. It should be something that tells us not to do something like this. So I read the lack of action from EPA and, and DEP in exactly the opposite way.
Are there any additional comments? Alright, hearing none, we have a motion and a second. So council will vote, all those in favor of adopting a resolution, resolution. How should we say this, a resolution saying we, what, how do we, Shelly, how do you want to say it?
We already in council's packet.
How do you want to make, how, I was trying to restate the motion.
Okay, I mean, it, I.
Just make sure everybody knows.
Yeah, I, you want me to reread?
Just read it again, just because I couldn't remember exactly how you said it.
Alright, a motion to adopt resolution number eleven. A resolution of the Town of McCandless Allegheny County Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Recommending as an environmental best management practice. That the use and application of cer- certain polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, PAHs. And other agencies be avoided for the purpose of sealing driveways, parking lots, and other paved areas within the town of McCandless.
Thank you, I couldn't remember all of that. Alright, there's a motion and a second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
We'll come vote.
Word two?
Aye.
Word three?
Nay.
Word four?
Nay.
Word five?
Aye.
Word six?
Aye.
Word seven?
Nay.
Word one?
Nay.
Motion fails.
Word three. Alright, moving forward, we, to chickens. This has been ongoing for two years? Long time. So we've had the public hearing on chickens, we've written a nice long ordinance on chickens trying to protect neighbors. Which has been my biggest concern is that people want to have chickens and we want to protect the neighbors from. The noise and the smell, and it's a pretty tight ordinance, but, so we are looking at. This is for adoption, right? Okay, okay.
Just because it's been so long since we. Talked about it.
Okay, alright. But so everything is done, the public hearing is done, everything is done, so this is announcement that we will be. Looking at adopting this ordinance next meeting, first meeting in July, so. That whole ordinance is on our website, so please feel free to look at that and you can come in and make your public comments. Next week if you have, or next meeting if you. Alright. New business, we have a presentation for land development.
On eighty-five hundred Thompson Run Road. Alright, lucky me, I get to test out a computer system as well. I think we should probably change my job title to technology guinea pig at this point. Alright, let me see if I can get this. So while I'm setting the computer up, I have several exhibits that Mr. Mark Schmidt from Hampton Tech. Has brought, he is the main engineer on the project. I believe that this development goes all the way back to maybe my, my very first meeting as a McCandless staff member. When there was a rezoning application up for consideration at eighty-five hundred Thompson Run Road. At that time, the original concept plan is presented was to include townhome units. It was rezoned from, I believe it was C seven, I want to say, to R three. Which includes both townhomes as well as garden apartments. Once that rezoning went through, you know, the developer went through. The process of trying to scope out the townhomes, put an application in for a variance to reduce the width essentially. Between the buildings, wasn't able to make it work because he did not receive that variance, and so he reoriented and came back with a garden apartment plan. So this is two buildings, twenty-four units per building, which is the maximum that you can have for garden apartments. They're supposed to be parking underneath. Assigned parking as well as a little bit of outside parking and some different recreation activity features for the residents of the apartment community. So at this point, they're coming in for their first presentation to town council after getting, you know, the recommendation. From the planning commission to proceed. There are also some questions about a sidewalk that I believe Mr. Schmidt is going to be providing further information about. Essentially, they're, they're requesting a waiver of the sidewalk only for the southern portion of the property. So anything north of the access drive, they have already stated their intent to construct as per, you know, the requirement in the code. But they are asking for a modification for the portion of the sidewalk south of where the entrance drive is. And just sort of as a general context for people that have been here longer than I and know what this means. The YWCA used to be on that property, so if you're trying to place it. From what I understand, that used to be the YWCA site. So unless anyone has any questions for me before I turn it over to Mr. Schmidt, I will do so. Alright. Let's connect this and see what happens. Our IT guy doesn't look concerned, so I'm going to go with everything is fine.
So we appreciate everyone's patience. Everyone knows what we've been going through the last year and a half, this is our second hybrid meeting. And so we've got all these new fancy things, and we have our fancy people who know about all these fancy tech things. And so we appreciate your patience because we're all learning and trying to work, work this out, so. Thank you very much, it's, it's been hard on everybody.
So what we used to have. A little historical perspective, what we used to have sitting right there was a table. With two boxes that were filled with Christmas decorations that we put our slide projector on, this is true. And we had a big drop down here, and then all the people in the middle had to scoot to the side to see that. So we're, we are progressing, we are making some progress, so.
Worst case scenario.
Just filling tons.
Like I said, this is why I am now the official town tech guinea pig.
Good evening, members of council, my name is Mark Schmidt, I'm with Hampton Technical Associates. Also with me tonight is Mr. Don Poole, developer of the property. As RJ stated, the property is located at eighty-five hundred Thompson Run Road, it is the former YWCA site. It's three point seven six acres in area, currently zoned R three. The proposal is to erect two apartment buildings, twenty-four units each. You will notice, we have an access drive leading to a parking lot, and then a continuation between the buildings would be. A, a drive that we would use for fire access if necessary between the two buildings. We have twenty-two outdoor parking spaces provided. As well as underneath each building, there's an additional thirty-seven parking spaces under each building. For a total of ninety-six, which means the required parking for this development. There are also enclosed dumpster locations at each end of the parking lot. For trash removal. If you could be so kind as to move to number two. This would be. Okay, this is our utility plan. Utilities are located along or near Thompson Run Road. Our water line is West Street Water Authority located on our side, on the east side of Thompson Run Road. Sanitary sewer owned by MTSA is off to the west. On the cemetery property, we have obtained an easement to access that from the cemetery. We'll be installing a public line from Thompson Run Road down to the sanitary and then individual taps up to our buildings. The storm sewer, we're using a traditional curb gutter inlet and storm sewer system to convey runoff to two. Detention systems, one, the main system is underneath the parking lot. Consisting of several tanks and a gravel bed. There's also a small ancillary system down near the entrance that handles the driveway itself between the parking lot and the entrance. That water is detained to the required rates. And then discharged to a new storm sewer that we would. Cross Thompson Run Road and convey down to the creek on cemetery property through an easement that we are obtaining from the cemetery. Okay, we go to number three. This is our landscape plan, we're providing buffer yards on all sides of the property. As well as all the additional landscaping required by the direction of the building and the parking. And we do have a maximum buffer yard, I think of thirty feet along the Mascarri property. If we can move to number four, please. Okay, this, as part of this project, we are requesting two waivers. Or modifications, number one would be to allow two-to-one slopes in lieu of. For cut and fill slopes in lieu of the ordinance requiring three-to-one. We have furnished a geotechnical report that supports that request. By providing calculations that your engineer has reviewed that the slopes at a two-to-one would be safe. Our planning commission recommended approval of this modification request. Subject to us putting a fence along the top of the two-to-one slopes to prevent injury. We have on this plan here provided that fencing along the top of the slopes. Our second request is regarding sidewalks. We are proposing a sidewalk essentially coming from the buildings down along the northerly side of our driveway. Down to Thompson Run, and that is extending north to our northerly property line. We are requesting a waiver from sidewalk from the entrance drive to the south. The reason being the seventh third of the property. Is, if I could, please, number five. This is a photograph of the southern portion of the property, you'll see that the slope is very steep. We're proposing, there would be a four-foot sidewalk, one foot behind the curb. Would require a retaining wall along the southern hundred and thirty feet of the property. Approaching anywhere from three to almost seven feet in height. That retaining wall would also require substantial disturbance to the slope you see there. Due to the overdig that would need to be put in for the wall. Haul the material away, and then backfill it with stone, requiring traffic control. Closing one lane of the road and a bunch of other things.
Mr. Smith, I'm sorry to interrupt, you said that you would need a retaining wall for the entire one hundred and thirty feet?
Yes.
I thought it was just the last third of that, not the entire way.
It isn't the entire way, it's one-third of our property.
One hundred and thirty feet is one-third of that?
Yeah, we're four hundred and forty feet. So retaining wall would be approaching seven feet in order to provide, and that's assuming a four-foot overdig. If we had to go with more, it might get a little bit higher. Unfortunately, to go over six feet, that would force us to get a variance from the zoning hearing board is my understanding. We do have one alternative on our plan. If I could go back to number four, please. We could install a sidewalk down to where the slope is to some future connection where you would cross the road with a pedestrian crossing. And then at some future time, some other developer could install a sidewalk along the westerly portion of Thompson Run Road. That's, that kind of solves two problems, because I know there's a, a concern by the township to get pedestrian traffic down to the swimming club. The same problem exists in front of the temple property, they have the steep slope that you saw there also exists in front of their property. So, and realist, you know, to be realistic about it, you need to cross the road and, and go down on the other side where it's much more feasible to, to put a sidewalk. I do have several photos, plans, if you could go to number six, please. This is a floor plan, typical floor plan of the property, or the proposed buildings showing the apartment layout. Number seven. This is the interior parking layout of each of the buildings. We have provided, yes, sir.
What type of screening is going to be around on the, because all these parking lots are on gray, because the building's above, correct?
Correct.
Is there any screening on the, on the outside?
On the outside parking?
Yeah.
There is, there's not any screening per se, other than the buffer yard down by the road. And the buffer yard up by the Mascarri property, and then a buffer yard back by the existing townhomes behind us. But there was additional landscaping required. So many parking space, so much for building and things that, that landscaping is concentrated in that area also. As well as there's a, a cut slope behind us and a full slope in front of us. No, that's your question.
The ground floor will be nothing but parking.
Correct, and, and entrance lobby, sir.
Is it one or two stories above that?
Be two stories above that. Okay, sorry, there's three. Okay, and if I could have number eight. Number eight just provides a perspective view of the proposed building so you get an idea of what it looks like. No, no, it is not. We don't have a perspective view of the parking area, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
For the out front parking or the entry parking?
The underneath. Below grade.
It is below grade. The I would say the Easterly building closest to Thompson Run Road. It is below grade except on the south side, or I'm sorry, the north side where the entrance is, that would be at grade. And on the Thompson Run Road side, I would say three quarters of it is under great, is below grade. The first floor apartments will have decks, not not patios.
What is the total cost of this project?
Perhaps Mr. Poole can answer that.
Yeah. Total cost? Somewhere in the neighborhood.
And if you I'm to the sidewalk, you know. And if you did build the sidewalk and you did, I walked that. I wasn't sure it needed retaining wall the whole 130 feet, but maybe it does. If you built that sidewalk with retaining wall, what would that cost? Because of course you're showing hardship, so what would that cost?
Retaining walls run Versilock, you're looking between $50 and $70 a square foot. So you're in the neighborhood of around 40, $40,000 to $50,000. That's just the cost of the wall, yeah. There would be additional costs due to traffic control and items like that and additional excavation.
I have been under the impression that mid-block crossings were kind of dangerous and not really.
It's not our preferred solution. We're just providing a one alternative. Our ideal solution would be to just install the driveway to the north.
I guess, Councilmember, what's the expectation then is that this cemetery would be developed sometime in the future? And we would require a sidewalk on that side of Thompson Run?
It's possible, yes.
A little historical perspective is that the last time the cemetery made improvements, they were given exception to the sidewalk also, which is the recent addition of the sidewalk there now.
So there should be no expectation that they'll be doing renovation again anytime in the future.
They have done it since I've been on council a couple of years ago, so that would be my expectation, right?
Are there, I can't see the council members at home. Are there any council members at home that have any questions? I can't see your hands. Please just speak up. Councilmember Smith?
Oh, yeah, my, my question goes, we, we couldn't see the, the photos or the, you know, whatever we're showing on the screen there over Zoom, or at least I couldn't. But we had, you know, we had the plans and stuff, so I followed along as well as I could. But for the alternative sidewalk solution that you were talking about, I imagine that means it would come down the east side of Thompson Road, Thompson Run Road halfway, give or take, and then there'd be some kind of crossing with, like you said, future development on the other side. So does that? And I guess this is pointed to, to anybody really. Would that mean we'd have to to get some kind of easement from the cemetery in order to be able to do anything like that, correct? Oh, now I can see the screen.
Expectation would be that because it's their property and they made improvements, that we could then hold them to the ordinance of building their own sidewalk.
Right, right. No, I'm, I'm asking in the alternative, have, have you approached the cemetery to to obtain an easement to meet that requirement to develop the other side?
We have not.
Are there other additional questions? Councilmember Spahnhols.
Yeah, I just wanted, I, I think this issue of sidewalks is very important. This is a road that needs sidewalks. There is the swim club. And I look at, and it's just my opinion, but even if these sidewalks, and I don't know what the, I don't know what the safest solution is to put in the sidewalks on this property at, at the expense discussed. Or to have this developer provide funds for an alternative solution. But while I'm, I'm obviously based on my background, very well aware of the cost of development and no, no developer wants to pay more than they have to. And even if this sidewalk or contribution cost up to $100,000, at least in my experience, very few projects have failed on the basis of a 1% increase in cost. So I, I'm just saying that I think that the sidewalks are important. And I think this is a road that's, that's heavily traveled and that we shouldn't ignore taking advantage of the ordinances that we have and enforcing them. That's all.
I have a question. It's not about the sidewalks at the moment, but looking at these plans, looking at the proposed building number two. Just out of curiosity, because maybe I'm just not, I'm not experienced in reading these as much as others might be, but it connects to the parking area with a darker gray. Where I'll propose building number one does not have that same sort of connection in these drawings.
It is virtually the same connection that Dresman, for some reason, chose a different shading, but it would be an asphalt connection.
One thing I really did like about this plan is that they have a recreation walking area around the top up there that there can use. And there's also a recreation. A lot of people give you our ordinance is, you know, 400, something ridiculous in lieu of an activity place, a recreation area, and they've actually supplied that down a little bit further. You can see that kind of between the, no, it's down, there it is. Yeah, there it is. And they actually have supplied it. So they have a walking trail and I think that's the red, is that the red dotted line?
Yes.
Trail that they put up there, helping you.
Yes.
The walk-in trail they put around there as well as that recreation area. I thought that was really nice. I, I did like that. So I don't want to just be all negative.
I, I do appreciate you bringing that up. Several other things that we're doing there. In addition to the walking trail, we're also putting up picnic pavilion, bocce court and a dedicated playfield.
That was good. Any other comments from any council members looking on the screen?
Oh, just.
Oh, Councilmember Smith?
Just quickly, where, because I couldn't see it before, where is that variance for the two to one slope that, that you're requesting?
That would be on all the cut and fill slopes that you see on the property. Essentially, it would be above building number two, be the east side of the property would be a cut slope and the west side of the property would be a fill slope.
So usually we'll hear the presentation and sometimes we'll call for motion to accept the plan or sometimes we kind of sit on it and look at it. These can be really complex for the, to the next meeting. So I wanted to. I'll be asking, we're ready for a motion. Yeah, no.
There's time with.
Oh, there's, no, no, we're good. Okay, okay. All right. So we can just, do you all want to wait a couple of weeks and look at the, to our next meeting or are you ready for a motion tonight?
What would be the motion about the sidewalk?
Well, that's, first, we would vote to grant the variances, right? The modifications, there, there were two, and then we would accept those or reject those, and then we would vote on the whole plan.
Modifications are the slopes and sidewalks.
Right.
If, sorry, I just wanted to, Sandy, can I? If we're ready to actually make a motion tonight, I just need to quickly compile what the contingencies typically are since we incorporate those into the staff report when we do the motion.
Why don't we just wait?
Yeah, I think, I mean, that was procedurally, that would probably be a little easier.
Let's just do that. All right. I didn't know if we were all just ready and wanted to move forward.
Hey, I, I don't want to hold a motion.
I know you like, we like to move if we can. Everyone, I think, wants to move if we can. Is there anything else that you need to tell us?
I would offer if any of the council members would want to meet out at site and walk around where the sidewalk would be, I'd be happy to meet, meet them there and show them the situation. If you want to set something up through RJ, I'd be happy to do that.
Mr. Paul, did you want to make a comment?
Yes.
Would you please come to the microphone, please? Would you please come to the microphone, please, so we can hear you and get you all recorded?
Don Poole, the developer. As RJ stated, we've been at this for quite some time. You know, we've been asked to do a traffic study, which we all knew, well, as a developer, I knew would have no impact, but we've done that. We've asked for a waiver on the private parking areas under the garage to be nine foot as opposed to 10 foot in the ordinance. We were denied. You know, other sites just recently achieved that waiver. The sidewalk issue is, I think, above and beyond. If you look at the site, the temple property could never have a sidewalk installed in it across it. So we, or council or is asking us to install a sidewalk to nowhere, basically. You know, I know the time wants to have sidewalks everywhere. I'm certainly not opposed to it, but this is just not practical. The, the cost is way beyond normal and that, to put up a, if we build a question for council or maybe the attorney, if we put up a six or seven foot high wall on, in the right of way, who is ultimately responsible for that maintenance? Would that be?
Yeah, the adjacent property, so it would be you.
Okay. So, you know, there's more added expense as we know all walls fall. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there are no further questions, we'll move on to discussion on the simple development, mitigation plans. Remember, we talked about fun things earlier. Free money is one of my very favorite things for the town and that's what this was for, for the town. So this is, this is very exciting.
This is another project that we've been discussing for quite some time. Simple Development was, or is doing a project in Moon Township to which they needed to do some mitigation of a wetland area that they were not able to accomplish on the site of the development. As a result, because Mr. Simple is a resident of McCandless and he was working with PVE on that Moon Township site and knew PVE had a relationship with the town of McCandless, approached the town to do a project along Pine Creek here of the town property that would offset his requirement with DEP to do the mitigation of the wetland. And through a variety of methods, the intent is to do a complete stream bank restoration of the Pine Creek area that runs the, the stretch of the town-owned property. And as I said, it will include a number of different things, reforesting certain areas along the the bank, stream bank restoration in a number of different ways. Creation of J hooks and other such things that I have no idea what they mean or how they work, but I'm told that they work well. And so it's a, it's a project that if the town were to undertake, we would be spending tens of thousands of dollars, if not a six-figure number to accomplish that because it's about 1,400 feet of stream bank that we're going to be getting credit for in our MS4 program that we're not paying for. So what DEP is requiring because of the back and forth discussions that have been taking place between PVE and DEP is a, an easement between the town of McCandless and Simple Development.
Easement or agreement?
It's, well, we have an agreement already in place with Simple to do the work that wasn't sufficient for DEP, so they want an actual easement which we have now received. We can, we can see exactly the area that they were disturbed and the area that would be involved here. And Steve and I have been reviewing that easement along with our requirements, and I think I will just, at this point, hand it off to Steve for the legal part of all of this. I got to say the good stuff in terms of the.
How much did that cost the town again?
Nothing.
Well, wait, I didn't do anything. No, honestly, so Bob sent the draft easement over and there are some revisions that are necessary, so I have to work with their lawyer. But based on the town code and the class of ordinances, it fits into the class B order, so it would have to be advertised for a public hearing, which yeah, Bob and I have been talking back and forth because it's, it's sort of silly. This is a temporary construction easement access, but the way it's described in the code, it's any transfer of property, disposition of property, et cetera, to the point where it, it talks about leasing, which is not a transfer of property. It's just a temporary encumbrance, right? So just this feels like it fits there and there's, I don't see a way around. We may want to consider changing that in the long run, but for now, for this project, we're going to have to deal with it. So, so my suggestion tonight, after discussion, if council would like to move forward, that you simply authorize the advertisement and authorize me to engage with Simple's attorney to work through the issues with the easement agreement and then we'll be back here in a month or so considering the easement in a formal manner.
Questions about this? I was hoping we were going to be able to take action on this tonight, so.
I've really tried to talk them into it. I was a little disappointed.
Yes. Did you have a similar situation a couple of years ago where work like this was done?
We, we had a similar situation with Pendoff when they were doing a slide repair along Rochester. So that, right at the beginning of the pandemic, we had to hold a public hearing. I think it was one of the very first Zoom meetings that we we did, we had a public hearing in that case and then took action following.
That was, that was part of the analysis too, is Bob has something like this come up, that that was a similar situation and we handled it from a hearing perspective, but my interpretation of the, of the previous town attorney's interpretation, I think, is consistent.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, so we'll let this rest, come back to it. Oh, no, we need to still make a motion to.
Whatever you would like to do, but I mean, you don't have to necessarily do a motion, but as long as there aren't any objections, move towards the hearing. I'll move towards working out provisions on the easement with Mr. Simple's attorney.
I support that. Everybody's good?
Thank you.
All right, good. Is there? Is there any additional new business? All right, before I ask for a motion to adjourn, I would like to announce that council will go into executive session following this meeting to review a litigation matter. There will be no further business after this, after our executive session. So is there a motion to adjourn?
Seven.
Remember what's and it looks like Councilmember Clinton was there for a second. All those in favor of adjourning me, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And for those council members who are zooming, give me a couple of minutes to log in and open up the the other Zoom meeting.
And we'll go into those chambers in there is where we will go for our new council members who haven't had executive session. Thank you all for being here. We appreciate you coming.